Well, I think it's on because I went through my other options.
Okay, I think it's on because it says recording.
Oh, it does. I see it.
Okay.
So it's recording. All right, so should we call the meeting to order? Which is the September 8th, 2020, meeting of the Larkspur Planning Commission will call to order. We have a roll call.
Okay, let's see, from my top to bottom, Chairman Tauber.
Here.
Commissioner Wagstaff.
Here.
Commissioner Swisher.
Here.
Commissioner Cunser.
Here.
And Commissioner Chalmers.
Yeah. Chalmers, yeah.
Just for the audience's edification, Daniel had to get his invite from our senior planner, Tyke, so his name on the screen is Kristen Tyke, but...
Okay, I think I could change that.
Daniel, if you can, just wave your hand so people know where you can change your name.
Yeah, I think it says rename. Why don't I do that?
Yeah, so if anybody watches this recording, since we have no members of the public in here on. So I don't see anybody in the list of the attendees, so I think it's just us. So I assume that means there's no public comment. So we'll move to the planning director's report.
Okay, thank you Chairman Tauber and members of the commission. We just remain very, pretty busy with planning applications are a little slowed down. We are getting a lot of solar permits, a lot of batteries, a lot of some generators here and there. So that's keeping our building department busy and we're getting a lot of, continue with a lot of resale reports. And then other work that's going on, we're making progress on the general plan update. Working on getting, we've completed our discussion with the circulation element with the General Plan Steering Committee and will be coming back to the committee to finalize land use before the end of the month and we're working right now with the consultants to get all the outstanding chapters proofread and out for preparation for release and the final draft hopefully early next month. Other activities that are going on, we are going to be later this month hosting several demonstrations with software providers. These are going to be all-day demonstrations involving various modules of cashiering, permit planning, inspections, planning review, code enforcement, GIS, property management information. So they involve a variety of staff. That's going to be a pretty intensive process. We're trying to make sure we get the, not just the right kind of software. I think any, for the providers we're looking at all have very good software and the tools we need. What we're really going to be looking at is what's a good fit for a small city like Larkspur and who's going to provide the best support that we need, being a small city with not a significant IT department. It's going to be important to have good implementation and support for that type of software. So these are things we're doing to not just adjust to the current circumstances, but also be better prepared for the future in digital and remote work environment. So that's largely what I had to report. One other item I thought worthwhile to let you know is the Red County is working on upgrades to Sir Francis Drake. It's a large project to upgrade bicycle pedestrian facilities and intersection improvements to improve vehicle movement as well. It's not necessarily capacity improvements, but it's certainly to create better, more efficient vehicle flow, but also to better manage bicyclists and pedestrians up and down the Sir Francis Drake corridor. That's been a project that's been under construction, starting in the Ross Valley area and it's beginning to move eastward and you'll begin to see construction activity occurring over the next two years along Sir Francis Drake in front of the Larkspur portion of Sir Francis Drake. So there is a website which is referred to as Upgrade the Drake or something like that. I'll send that out to you. It's got information about it on the county and just thought it'd be important to know in case you get questions. It is a, it is a project that's anticipated to improve, largely to improve both bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Any questions?
Are they going to rename Sir Francis Drake?
I'm not sure the schedule, that's it. The county is lead on a countywide committee to evaluate the issue and they've actually held a meeting, I believe about two weeks ago. So there's, they're engaging, they're doing some public engagement, getting some information. You know, basically they're kind of in an information gathering stage at this point. Nothing's been decided. Ultimately, it'll be up to each jurisdiction. But certainly, I think one of the overriding themes is to try to achieve some consistency, so it's, there's not confusion. If the, if the county does lead and decides to rename Sir Francis Drake. You know, I think with that, I'd note East Sir Francis Drake is actually has a different set of addresses and that's all largely within the city of Larkspur. But it's identified as part of that quarter.
Is the work you're talking about on the east side, or, because there's a lot of work already going on the other side?
Do you mean the work, work occurring along Sir Francis Drake now?
Seems like islands and, you know, whatever, but...
Yeah, they just started, they've really started doing the work and I think what came to our attention was they initially had planned to do some evening work and avoid traffic, however, with the traffic volumes being reduced due to COVID, they've decided to accelerate the program and do daytime work, which is causing some backup in traffic or so I understand some complaints on that. But yes, the construction has begun and it's anticipated to be off and on for another year and a half, two years.
Okay, thanks Neil.
Also, the city Public Works did do some island improvements on South Aliso Boulevard. And I, and I said that, I'll send a link, I sent a link out to the General Plan Steering Committee on information from the Transportation Authority and their newsletter. I'll send that to the, to the commission as well. I think it's pretty interesting to see the projects that are occurring. Commissioner Cunser may have read that and have been subscribing to it. But they do talk about some work that's occurred recently in, in South Aliso and the Green Bay area. And that's it for me. Any other questions?
Okay, well, we do have one public hearing item. And that is an amendment to 2025, 20-25 for hit to the zoning ordinance amendments to chapters 18.06, which is the zoning administrator, 18-3434 Slope and Hillside, 1835 residential floor area ratios and 1864 design review of all Larkspur municipal code. So, staff report, I guess.
Thank you Chair Tauber. This application is a follow-up to the commission's June 9th, 2020 meeting where we discussed the city budget and staffing concerns and the need to streamline some planning processes where possible. The proposed text amendments before you are intended to expand the role of the zoning administrator, which will streamline some planning review for less substantive projects. The zoning administrator review does include a public notice and a public hearing. Surrounding property owners will still be advised of their ability to participate in the hearing and to review the plans and comment on them. However, unlike the planning commission, who meets on a pre-scheduled date twice a month, the zoning administrator will be able to schedule meetings on an as-needed basis and as often as required. Additionally, the zoning administrator hearing process does not require the preparation of a full staff report that we prepare for the commission to advise you of all the details regarding the project and these factors reduce the overall processing time, the man-hours required to process the permit and the overall cost to the applicant and property owner. It's important to remember the zoning administrator has the right in the code to defer any application up to the planning commission if it appears to be controversial or there are aspects of it that don't appear to lend itself to a lesser review. And also that the zoning administrator decisions are appealed to the city council. So there's always that ability to get another hearing body to consider the issues. In addition to expanding the zoning administrator role, staff has included amendments to improve consistency with other chapters of the municipal code and to add clarity and improve the readability. Generally, the text amendments include amending the powers and duties of the zoning administrator and the slope use permit regulations to allow the zoning administrator to review amendments to previously approved and completed slope use permits. The cumulative provisions of the slope and hillside regulations require we, we consider prior grading. So any applicant, any person who wants to do more grading after a slope use permit's done has to return for an amendment or basically it's a new application. And we kind of look at all the grading proposed and determine if it can be approved. So with these amendments, we're suggesting the ZA review more minor projects of less than 25 cubic yards of grading, cut and fill combined. And then the planning commission hear anything over that. We also propose amending the residential floor area regulations to account for state mandated exemptions of floor area for detached and attached residential second units. And amending the floor area ratio exception permit process to allow the zoning administrator to review some smaller second-story additions as well as ground story that require an FAR exception. And amending 1864020, projects subject to design review and exemptions. And that section we did a little more work on because it has traditionally been a bit difficult for applicants and individuals to wade through. And we were also trying to just provide a bit more expansion on the exemptions as well as expanding the zoning administrator's role. So I am here to answer any specific questions you have. If you want to go through this code section on a, on a a section-by-section discussion, here's the ordinance up for you to look at. And I will return this discussion back to the commission.
So I think, right now, we still see your agenda. I think you have to stop sharing and then re-share.
Yeah, if you want to put up the ordinance, Kristin. That you have.
Now share.
You didn't have the ordinance.
Yeah.
Does the ordinance show now?
No, you gotta do, gotta hit share.
Share, share your screen and then click on the.
I'm already sharing the screen, so I'm a little.
Oh, you have to stop sharing. Stop sharing. Then share again and click on the correct file and it should show it.
Where is my?
There you go.
Okay. All right.
So.
I need to do this more than every two weeks.
So, so Kristin, there's, there's a reference in your, in your written discussion to section 18.68 dot 025. And I can't find that particular section in the current city code.
I think that's the section we've added to design review.
Okay, okay, because it says deletion of criteria B. That's why I was a little bit confused because you referred to a criteria deletion, but if you're adding to it, I don't know where that deletion is actually taking place.
Okay, so 1864025 is the new code section we created for projects subject to zoning administrator?
Right, just below that says deletion of criteria B.
Right, if you look at the ordinance, I've, we've crossed out B, which said projects that require designer approval by the zoning administrator. Because the O2O used to be A, projects that were exempt, B, projects requiring approval by the zoning administrator, and then C, projects that went to planning commission.
Okay, so that's criteria B in, in O2O.
It's just some reorganization, right?
Okay, all right, okay, got it, thanks.
So Kristin, I have a couple of questions. I guess we talked about somewhere between 200 and 400 square feet, so 300 sounds, sounds about right.
That's actually where we landed, I think. Was 300.
Yeah. One of the things I noticed is that the height of accessory structures is 20 feet. Is that correct or not?
Accessory or, no, I think that's a new additions. Can you kind of point to me where you're looking so we can?
It's under 1864.030.
030 is planning commission review.
Okay. And then so what, what was the square footage of accessory structures, 200 square feet? Is that?
No, under floor area ratios, 200 square feet is a one-time exemption when you've never had an FAR exception approved for your property.
I see, okay.
Under exemptions and design review, we allowed, and we still do, allow people to propose a detached accessory structure 15 feet in height or less, not to exceed 400 square feet if it complies with zoning.
Ah, okay, that's what I, that's what I thought and I wasn't sure whether we were switching it to 20 feet of height. Because.
Number three, it's still accessory structures, gross floor area or 400 square feet or less. So an accessory structure in the R1 and R2 codes has a height limit built in there. So we took out the reference to a height limit here.
So does it still have a height limit?
Yeah, it's 15 feet in the R1.
Okay.
In R2, I'd have to go look. I don't know that one by heart.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's okay, because otherwise it's 16 feet you get into by R, R code anyway, it becomes another floor. So you have to count FAR twice.
Only if it's interior space that's 16 feet.
Yeah.
For floor area, it's a different measurement. It'd be finished floor to the roof above and if it reaches greater than 15, we double.
Yep, okay. By the way, I like your simplifying, you know, without As and Bs and all the rest of that. Because it, it doesn't need to be that complicated. So I think, I think what you've done from my perspective is good.
Great.
That's interesting. This is Natasha, sorry. I have an interesting, a different perspective on that. You're talking about in the exemptions of the three different exemptions and then she divides it up into she's taken the A, B, and C and put it into one sentence.
I think that he's mentioning, yes.
Yeah. Actually, mind her, I've always looked at it as being a lot clearer instead of having a full sentence with everything crammed into one sentence, laying out all the conditions separately on different lines, so A, B, and C. That's just my perspective and my opinion on that. As opposed to all running in one, one long sentence. It's just easy to see what you need to do and you can check it off.
I think if I could, if I could weigh in on that.
Sure, sure. I'm not, I'm not wedded to that. It's just a stylistic thing.
And I think from a stylistically, or at least from a, from a code standpoint, to, when you have two to three kind of variables or factors being described, that's kind of the maximum. Obviously, as you start getting too many things involved, you want to list it. So like, as you say, you want to be able to really sort of check the box. And I think maybe this was just kind of a half dozen of the other where we're trying to compact it a little bit. And I, I think it's interesting that because I, I think it could work one, one way or the other. I think it's interesting Barack as the architect kind of finds this preferable versus from a good, you know, legal reading, it's kind of better to spell it out. So from a staff standpoint, we're fine either way. I think we're just looking at how to sort of shorten up the, the density of the text a little bit. If it's, if it's a simple enough point. And the other point is as long as it's not ands, ors.
Right.
Everything's applicable.
I, I don't, I mean, it's still legally correct, so it doesn't really matter either way. It's just a stylistic thing from my perspective. I've always thought it was simpler. I can happily defer to the rest of the commission on what their preference is on that.
And I think when you say for no discretionary land use permit is, for which that appears in almost everything. And it seems like it doesn't need to be A, B, C, D with that included. I don't know, it reads pretty well to me, but.
So would you like me to go to the top and we can just walk through them really as you see it? Instead of, we're in about the middle of the ordinance right now.
Sure, you mean from the beginning? I mean, or do you want us to raise issues that we have already?
Address them in order, okay.
Yeah.
So we'll start with zoning administrator powers and duties. Does anyone have any comments or suggestions for a different language?
I do. So I would suggest that we change the word chapter to section because that's how it's generally referenced in the ordinance. See Larkspur Municipal Code, section, because you're actually referencing a very specific subsection there.
You want me to change language somewhere? I'm sorry, I didn't follow you.
Oh, in section K, the new language that you added? Where it says amendment of a previously proved completed. Sorry, I thought that was the only change there. You've added pursuant to Larkspur Municipal Code, chapter, I think strictly speaking, it should be said. Yeah, okay.
So we'll keep going. Slope and hillside? Does anyone have any comments?
I do. Kristin notices they're coming. So site grading is proposed on a property in addition to prior grading. My interpretation of property tends to be like a building, you know, it could be a building or it could be land. So it seems that the code, when you look through the code, they tend to, and here it's talking about land. And it seems like the code prefers to use the, the language lot or parcel. And if you look at the prior two paragraphs, they actually refer to parcel. See, the average slope of the parcel exceeds the average slope the parcel is. You look at two and three. So I'm thinking we just get rid of property and swap it for parcel or lot.
Anybody have any objections to that change?
Nope, I think that's good.
Okay, and then if you keep reading, sorry, next sentence, applications for new grading. And instead of off less than 25 cubic yard, you should say off 25 in numericals, then the word 25 cubic yards or less. So you, so that's in conformance with the other two paragraphs and you've captured 25 as well.
25 and then in brackets.
And I can email this. I don't know if I'm committed to do that. If there's any long-winded changes, I can email. So it would say, applications for new grading off open parentheses, numerical 25, close parentheses, then 25 cubic yards or less. And you delete the words less than.
Yep, I've got it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Only the code has it 25 and then in brackets. I'll match that if that's okay.
Oh, sorry. Yes, you're absolutely right. Yeah, yeah, other way around. I was just looking at my notes here.
Moving on.
Does anyone else have any comments on that?
I think that works.
Well, it sounds like you want to do that in the second sentence there too.
I'll get it. I found, I saw that.
Yeah. I had language that set this out slightly differently, but if everyone else on the commission is comfortable and this language is clear to them, then I'm not going to make any changes. Any additional changes.
So do you want the same change as we're looking at in the next page of attachment A number three? Do you want that to say section?
Laura, I can't quite hear you.
Yeah, I couldn't hear you either, sorry.
So on the next page, going scrolling down at number three, you want that to say section as well? Instead of chapter?
Yes. It was originally referring to the chapter, but then we got more specific.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, chapters, anything after that second decimal point is a section, right?
Yeah. Also, we noted earlier in my discussions with Natasha that this should say 1823060E4.
Yeah.
The E.
Okay, so we've moved on to the next one. Okay, slope. So here's what I would say for that section. So in section 1334060, number three, I would recommend that you say a new detached or attached accessory dwelling unit as specifically described in section blah, 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 you know, 1823060E4 of the municipal, Larkspur Municipal Code. And the reason I'm suggesting that change is because there is a definition of accessory dwelling unit already and we're not talking about that definition. We're talking about the very specific limited definition which has the square footage limitation, which is an E only. Right? Hopefully everyone's on the same page.
They have to meet specific criteria of E in order for them to be exempted from floor area.
Correct, yeah. So I would change as so I would change that sentence to say a specifically described, to be very clear. I mean, this is just legalese.
No, I, I see your point in that.
Okay, I've got that.
Specifically described in section, yeah, okay. And then, shall I keep going?
Yes.
Yeah, maybe I just keep going and then people stop me if they have other thoughts, yeah. You can tell I'm the lawyer on here. So the next sentence, the next paragraph, any floor area added to, and I saw you changed home to property. Again, it's my issue about property, you know, it could be land or it could be a building. So maybe in this case, you're not talking about, earlier you were talking about land. That's why I changed it to parcel, but here now actually. That's why I changed it to a parcel. But here now, she's talking about a structure. So you might want to actually say structure or building or dwelling. Dwelling is obviously only residential, so one of those two terms might be better suited to this one sentence.
I've got a, I've got a question about that. Because this, just a second, does this paragraph also cover dwelling units that might not be attached to an existing structure?
That might not be what?
Attached to an existing structure that might be detached.
Yes.
If it does refer to that, then maybe maybe structure. Natasha, what, what, what word were you proposing?
I thought any one of structure or building or dwelling, because it was originally referring to home. I was thinking dwelling. These are, these are terms that are already existing, already been used in this code. So structure or billing, building or dwelling, I thought worked. Just instead of the reference to property and that appears twice here.
Okay, and, and in your mind, that doesn't imply that any, the addition is, is an attached addition that could also, that could also apply to an unattached addition like.
Right. So it can't be a structure because it could be a detached building. Brand new building.
Then just go with building or dwelling.
It could be, I mean, yeah, I, I think the idea here though is number two would be an accessory dwelling. Subsection C2 is a dwelling, so it wouldn't necessarily be added to a structure. It'd be added to the
Property.
Property or the site or if, Natasha, do you have a concern with the, the lay under stern is the term property problematic for being the same as the site? I know you were indicating lot is more the technical definition of the property.
When you look at the definitions, you don't have a definition for property.
Right.
Let me go back up there. I was pulling it from section 1808.
Right.
Where you actually have. Where you have, yeah, you have definitely a line. You have your reference building and you reference structure. So like a structure in which is conduct for the principal use of the lot, including dwellings. So at the end of the day, I don't think it's crucial. I, I'm just giving it a closer eye. You know, if you, if, if it's too problematic, this is not something that I'm going to be completely stuck on.
Yeah, because I do think in this case, it could be, it could either, either be added to the building or to the, or to the site. So we're looking more at the whole. And so I think it's the, the proper term for def defining would be either to, to a site or to a lot. We can, we can look at that a little more closely.
Actually, I think property actually covers it pretty well.
Yeah, that was my thought too.
Is, you know, a very precise amount of area in the subdivision, whereas property covers that and a five acre parcel, for instance.
So is the intention here that it covers land and buildings?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Then in that case, that should be fine because I was looking at it as a replacement for home. Because you know, you struck at home and put property instead.
Yeah, because I think the idea is that it, there are situations when it's not going to be an addition. There's new floor area. But it's not an addition. It's a, it's a new separate structure.
In that case then, then just leave that as property. But these are good discussions to have.
Site is another word that we use all the time too, but I think property actually covers a broader spectrum.
Yeah, I think, I mean, property kind of, as you say, it sort of substitutes for the whole of either the site or the building. Because it is. And, and to be honest, but I, we're, I, I'm not sure we're ever going to really run into debates over these.
Yeah, I, I agree. So I'm just going to keep going. So any floor area added to a property, leave it as property under the condition outlined in C, subsection C3, I would add in the language of this section. Just so you know, it's this C, this street, this C3 here, not nowhere else. Shall count towards, and there's a missing S there. The floor area ratio, if the unit is, and then I don't think you need the word later. If the unit is modified so that it no longer complies with, instead of meets, the definition of the accessory dwelling unit in. Am I going too fast?
No, I got it.
Okay. A dwelling unit. And then I was, this is now you've gone back to the other definition now. This isn't your, like, tell me if I'm wrong, Kristin. Here you're just talking about the accessory dwelling unit in general, not the very, very specific one in E4. Yes. So what I was thinking then is you actually maybe ref, just say that and just say the definition of an accessory dwelling unit in section 182320 and the development standards in 182360.
Well, we don't want to do that because we're talking about square footage added under three, which is referring to that very specific exemption. But the definition of a, of a, of an accessory dwelling unit is in the accessory. Can't even think. Accessory dwelling unit code section. So we can refer back to that definition just to say this is what an accessory dwelling unit is comprised of.
Right. So that's because, I don't know if anyone else had this confusion because there's a two, there's two, there's an accessory dwelling unit that falls within E4, which is very specific to what's being exempted here. And then there's a general definition of accessory dwelling unit. So if you go ahead and you put in an accessory dwelling unit.
Definition does apply because all it's doing is describing what an accessory dwelling unit is and what it needs become a accessory dwelling unit. But this exemption above in three is saying, this is right out of the state law, which says if somebody proposes a building that meets this criteria, we have to handle it with a building permit only.
Okay. So, so my thought is to be very, is to, is to refer back to the, where the definition of accessory dwelling unit is, which is back in the code of 182023. And you've got those, those development standards which say, you know, you've got to put a kitchen in. You know, it's got to have all these additional things.
Right.
And then the next piece, I can go either way on, and I did raise this with Kristin, and I was curious to see what the rest of the commissioners thought, was instead of the next sentence, and I came up with some language, Kristin, and you tell me if what you think of this was in the, where it says in the event that that the accessory dwelling unit is modified, the property owner may be required to obtain approval of after the facts, after the fact permits to legalize the previously exempted floor area. I wondered whether we put the onus onto the property owner. We may not want to do that. We may just say, fine, you know, if it gets, if it gets discovered, it gets discovered. Or we say, okay, if a property owner at a later date says, you know what, I've done my accessory unit, but I want to use it for something else. I'm going to take my kitchen out. Put the onus on him or her at that time to go ahead and ensure that they have compliance with the code. And I came up with some language that says that. If anyone wants to hear it.
Yeah, I'd like to hear it.
In the event that an accessory dwelling, accessory dwelling unit no longer complies with the requirement set forth in 182360, which is those design development standards, the property owner shall be subject to submittal of the required permits in 1823050.
So there may not be any required permits. So you have to remember that. They will have a building permit. It will be built in compliance with building code. The question is whether it will meet setbacks or floor area and lot coverage. Those are the exemptions specifically. And some will be able to be built without exceeding those limits. So that's one of the reasons you can't demand compliance with a permit you may not need.
So then you could add, if you wanted to, if required. Or we don't change it and we leave it as it is and there's no affirmative action required by any property owner.
I think, and I think what Kristin is referring to is that while a, well, while it may be exempted from the FAR as this, as an accessory dwelling unit, meeting that condition, it's exempted from counting as an FAR, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be subject to legalization under an FAR exception if it's converted. Some cases, many cases, it probably will. Some cases, they might still be under the floor area, even though it hadn't counted to begin with. So it's, it's not necessarily a requirement. But it could be identified. And I think our, our, we, we really try to address this in the accessory dwelling unit chapter. And through the recordation of deeds for these types of projects for second units that may be having an exemption. If it's exempt from floor area. So that, it's that section that's actually a little more operable. We just wanted to make sure this was consistent.
So let me ask a question then. If you have an accessory dwelling unit that complies with the sections of 1823060, right? And then later on, you take out like a kitchen or the access or something changes that is no longer, does that matter? Does that, does that require you then to go and put that back into compliance or get a permit?
Maybe.
Would you always have to be in compliance with 1823060?
It's actually, it's a good question. Because I have personal experience with at least a few clients who basically did ADUs to get extra space in their house. And there's no obligation to actually, as far as I know, to, to rent it out to somebody or to let somebody use it. So once it's done, if they tear the kitchen out, it's not, it won't be picked up until the, the house is sold. I, I, I think that's when it would, would come into play.
And that's exactly right, Brock. And maybe that's okay. Maybe we decide that that's acceptable enough.
Well, I think, I, I think to give, you're actually reflecting what's a, I think for a lot of us planners, kind of a frustrating reality of the state law and the mandate of imposing this on, for, for the best of intentions for housing, yet on the other hand, creating a scenario that from a planning, from an operational standpoint is really problematic because essentially we, in our code, we've indicated very clearly, it has to be, if you're getting these exemptions, you have to maintain it as a accessory dwelling unit. And, and as part of the deed restriction, you need to understand, agree that you would need to get permits to correct it or to legalize it if you were to change that. But the only enforcement of actually using it as a second unit, there really is none. As long as you have the kitchen and the bedroom bath facilities, there's no specification on how you use it. It simply is there available to either rent or to use for family or friends or however you use it. The only truly operable enforcement is that whatever you need a permit for in terms of plumbing and electrical to remove those things or do demo, you're not going to get a permit for it unless you go through the steps to legalize that change, which may be coming back to the commission for a floor area exception after the fact, or it may be having to demolish a, or convert a garage back to a garage. If you want to take out a second unit, then you have to make it, if it was a garage conversion, you got to make it back into a garage. Because that's one of the other big hits that the zoning, or the big, what you might call one of the significant losses from our standard zoning is these can not only, not just get exemptions to floor area, but reduce the parking supply. And so on those two counts, it, it has yet to really be tested. We're going to just have to comply with state law and see where it goes. But that's about the best we can do.
I don't think there are any communities that are policing this. Once you've got your permit signed off, if somebody goes in there and personally tears out the kitchen, nobody knows but them.
Impossible for us to track that.
But all, I mean, all of this, all of this is absolutely, is absolutely true. I'm just not sure whether we want to imply or state within the, within this document and the revisions of the ordinance, the, you know, the fact that the city simply lacks the policing resources that would be needed to make sure that everybody's in compliance at all times. So for that reason, I'm, I, I'm, I'm just wondering if the wording that's there right now isn't, you know, isn't adequate. You know, given the context and given all of the, all of the caveats and Kristin and, and Neil mentioned, particularly the fact, well, somebody might have an accessory dwelling unit, but even if they take, take it out, they, you know, they might still be in compliance. That's, that's a possibility. I mean, it's a theoretical possibility. Yeah. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering if, if, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't avoid opening a can of worms. And if this, if this sentence doesn't adequately achieve that.
So I, I, I do value all the commissioners' inputs on this. I think it's really helpful. I mean, I, I look at it very much as a lawyer. You know, as you know, right? Which is why I'm going, going to this level of detail. So, and it's, you know, I, I like to have it very, you know, buttoned up in the contract. However, there's what happens in real life and how things work in practice and what actually happens on a day-to-day basis. So and this is what you guys see and you know. So that's why I'm offering one suggestion, but it's not necessarily the right suggestion. It's something that's sort of up for discussion and.
Well, I, I think, is your largest issue with the word may? Property owner may be required as opposed to shall? Because I think, I think shall is not that problematic in that it's simply.
Well, I don't think Kristin can agree to that because I think.
Well, we can use shall as long as we also add as determined, necessary or whatever the.
Yeah, because it might not be necessary, right?
Yeah.
Permits might not be required.
Yeah, I, I mean, actually my, I'm not that, because you're right. The property owner may or may not have to do it. I think what I wanted to be clear about is that in this event, you're not just complying with an accessory dwelling unit requirement under that very minimal requirement in E4. It's, it's all the requirements of the accessory dwelling unit, you know, the kitchen, the access, everything. I mean, I mean, it's, it's part of this is, as an attorney, you know, I want to see it very clearly. I tend to rewrite things legalese sometimes and, but I was very clear at the beginning of this suggestion. I don't think this is an absolutely crucial one. I'm hoping I'm being very clear about what I think is really important and what's not. And I wanted to get the feedback of everybody. And if everyone looked up to this and thought this works, I'm happy just, I'm happy with it. It's good enough.
I, I think it works as well as anything you can do. There's, there, there is no binding people honest, if they don't want to be. And you know, you, when you grant them extra FAR, you would, an ADU, it would be nice if they actually did one and used it for that. But we don't.
I think the way I look at it is that my language automatically puts the onus onto a property owner, effectively puts them in default of this section. As opposed to, it just sits there. Nobody's in any trouble really until they get caught out. Or something comes out in the open when there's a seller for property or if something comes out later. Which at the end of the day, we don't, maybe that's okay. Maybe that's, you know, we don't want to be out there just trying to like catch people out all the time.
I don't think shall is a problem because it, it, either way, it's a change to the use of the, whether it's a building permit or some kind of zoning approval. It's just confirmation. It's just confirmation that the previously exempted floor area may either be, continue to be legal or they need to get a floor area exception or do some other adjustment. Because may, may is a little bit passive.
Yeah, but if you.
It doesn't necessarily direct an action.
Yeah, if you, if you, if you were to do that, so the property owner shall be required to obtain approval of, would you want to add the word prescribed after the fact permits to legalize the previously exempted floor area? Because you still want to cover for the eventuality that somebody who actually takes out an ADU might still be in compliance. They might not need a permit.
Or we could say after the fact permits comma as required, comma.
Yeah, so required, yeah. You have twice the word required, but that's.
Because that's, that's kind of, again, we're sort of leaning back to the ADU ordinance itself, which has language that, sort of, similar operable language. And that's, that's really where we're providing that exemption from the various zoning categories per state law.
So my interpretation is if you're not going to make the complete change to the sentence, don't try and make little tweaks here and there. It, it's fine as it's written. It's, you can tell what it's trying to say. You either rewrite it or you leave it as it is. That's my opinion on this.
Well, can I ask you a question, Natasha?
As opposed, yeah.
Since, as, as an attorney, could you imagine a scenario where somebody is actually not in compliance, having removed an ADU? And given the wording of this ordinance, could that person then contest any kind of enforcement action that the city, the city decides to take if they were not compliant? Because in your view, the census is simply not clear enough as to what the property owner's requirements are.
My, my interpretation would be that if I was a property owner and I took out my kitchen, you know, I don't actually have to do anything. I can, I can just wait until there's, there's, the city becomes aware. You know, it's not, there's no affirmative action required. Now, once, once there's some, what, I mean, that, that's, that's what I would argue. Because it still says that it may be required to obtain approval of after the facts permits to leg, I mean, after the fact, to legalize a previously exempted, I mean, I, there's, I think the intention is, is there, the spirit of what you're trying to say is there, that now that you've taken away the unit, you may now need permits. We're just not going to tell you whether or not you need permits. You're just going to have to work with the city to figure it out. That's how I read this, is you may need permits, just be aware of that. There's no requirement to do anything here.
So, so to help us move on, what again is the sentence that you would, the rewriting you suggest? And I could, I'll let the commission decide whether to change it or not?
Okay, I'll read it slowly because in the event, an accessory dwelling unit no longer complies with the requirements set forth in 182360. Those are the development standards that list out everything you need for an accessory dwelling unit, right? So as required, it says forth in 182360, the property owner shall be subject to submittal of the required permits in 1823050. And that's, that's, and that's last bit of that sentence is lifted exactly from the section that says you have to apply under 1823050.
We were going to add if required.
If required, yes.
I'm not clear why you're referencing 1823050 because they may need a setback variance, which is in the R1 district regulations, or a lot coverage variance, which is in the R1. So, because this thing exempted, this section of the 1823 exempts us from considering that. They, they don't have to comply with the standards. They, they get to be four feet from a side and rear, and we can't count floor area or a lot coverage, normally covered R1.
So that's a great point. So when you say after the fact permits, which after the fact permits are you referring to?
That's just it, that's why we don't, we're not that specific. It's because the after the fact permits could be varied. It's a 16-foot height limit. We have a 15-foot height limit on accessory structures. So if it's detached, they're now over height.
But then, then.
Step back, and they might. That's why, you know, you, you just.
That's a great point. So I would then.
Have to apply a lot of layers. So we would have to go through it with them and tell them what they need once we know what.
Okay. So you could then just delete the reference to the section code and just say the property owner shall be subject to submittal of the, of any required permits. Off, you know, or off required permits, comma, if any.
Okay.
If any.
It's, it's an impossible situation in the sense that people can get a lot more FAR than they're required, than they're allowed by doing an ADU. And then if, if they decide that they're, they just wanted that square footage and they tear out the kitchen and turn it into a family room, unless you have enforcement, it just, you know, that's the way it is. They're not a compliant.
Brock, I think, I think we're just trying to like, recognizing that's the case or think we're just trying to tie up the.
Yeah.
Language that is really operative in this exception to correcting this exception if they do, if they were to do that. And I.
I think shall is a good word.
I mean.
As a non-lawyer, can I just say that the best, to me, the most sensical way of saying this is the property owner may be required to obtain any necessary permits to legalize a previously exempted floor area. That's very simple. And then, and that leaves it open to whatever permits may be necessary, and that, that could change over time, but.
Say that again, Jeffrey.
The property owner may be required to obtain any necessary permits to legalize the previously exempted floor area.
Right, well, that's the same sort of thing, but you have, you need a beginning part of that sentence.
Right, right, not included.
Yeah, so in the event that you're no longer in compliance.
Accessory dwelling is modified in the manner described, I wouldn't even say in the immediately preceding sentence, just, and described previously, the property owner may be required to obtain any necessary permits to legalize the previously exempted floor area. Less wordy, you know, I don't know. I'm, again, I'm not a lawyer.
Can you say it more broadly and just say that it's applicable by the city and any requirements, you know, as per the code or something like that?
Why don't we, why don't we just take a look? We'll, we'll make sure and take a look at what we say in the other section and try to just tie it, tie it together there, make it, I think, make it a little more directive. So it's not quite as passive as it sounds right now in terms of maybe. And I think your, your point, Jeffrey required, required to obtain or shall obtain a required permits.
Any necessary.
Any necessary permits is, is probably, you know, we're probably going in the right direction. And why don't we try to tie, why don't we try to cinch this up a little more? We'll check with our attorneys. We do want to keep it, we do want to keep it plain enough that it's very clear to people without, we don't want to, we make it too directive and, and too explanatory, it gets confusing. I'd like to say, I'd like to have us rely on the ADU section as much as possible. So we'll take a look at that and kind of make sure it's aligning with that language.
Neil, I, I would propose retaining that, the, the phrase at the very end, end of that sentence, to legalize the previous exempted, previously exempted floor area. I think you might want to re, actually retain that language at the end of the sentence. So it's, so it's clear that, that somebody who's not in compliance is actually no longer has a legally, a legally approved property.
Let's see what we can do. I, I've got lots of good input here.
Yeah, I think we can, we can make it work.
And Natasha, if you would email me your suggested language too, then I've got Mr. Swisher's, then I will, I can do the sort of blend it into something that everyone will be happy with.
Okay. Do, is this, am I required to like copy everybody or do I just send it to you?
No, you can just send it to me by email. That'd be cool.
You're not allowed to copy everybody?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Just, yeah, checking, thanks. Still learning the rules here. Okay, should we move on? I had one question on exception permit. When you said here, the zoning administrator may grant an exception permit for detached accessory structures in addition, additions to single-family and duplex residences. It's definitely just detached.
It's detached, no, it's detached accessory structures and additions to single-family and duplex residences.
Okay.
Both.
Okay, okay. Then section 1864. Oh, this is the one, yeah, I had no issue with the language. Actually, yeah, I did, you know what? This is what I raised earlier with you, Kristen, was we should maybe conform the reference to discretionary permits. So we either say discretionary permits throughout, or we say discretionary land use permits throughout.
Right.
So we're always referring to the same thing. Doesn't matter which one it is, as long as we refer to the same one.
One and two says discretionary permits, and number three says discretionary land use permits. And that, I think that's a leftover from old language that I'm.
Let me ask, let me ask you a question, Natasha, since we've got the, an attorney, free attorney advice.
It's always the worst, by the way, free attorney.
The first section A, the first section A is the broad requirement. It's basically just about everything requires design review for building permits and, or a building requiring a, or requiring modifications requiring a discretionary land use permit. So I guess the question I'm wondering is, and maybe I'm overthinking this, do we have to repeat that these exemptions do not require a discretionary land use permit? Or does that go without saying? Because the exemptions follow that requirement.
Well, the fact that you've divided it up into three separate paragraphs, you need to be very clear. I mean, you could, I mean, I could think about it and see how I would just define it once and then reference it each time.
I think that language is in there just to help the casual reader who's trying to decide if they can make an addition. If it's in there.
It helps to avoid arguments.
I don't need a variance, I don't need that to go through a permit processor.
Right.
I mean, we just need to make, I mean, my point on that really was just, you don't want somebody to read it and say, oh, wait a minute, he says land use permits here and it didn't say that elsewhere. Is that something different? Are you talking about the sand use? Yeah, or, or take out land use. It, it is annoying that you have to keep repeating it, but because it's three separate sections, you sort of have to have the rules pretty clear.
I agree, it could, it could be interpreted that, that these types of additions are exempt regardless of whether it's a building permit or discretionary permit involved.
Right. And with all respect to Brock as well, I, I actually think to make it even clearer, I would set it out on separate, like point A, you know, point A, point B, point C, these are the three things you have to comply with, check, check, check. As opposed to one long sentence, sometimes people miss things out. But again, that's not a, that, that doesn't change the effect of the, the code here. Legally, it's still correct, it's pure, purely stylistic. And when I'm marking up documents, I'm always putting in checklists, and I personally prefer that. But again, happy to keep the changes, you know, not make so many changes.
Do you want to have them weigh in and tell me which direction they want to go stylistically?
I, you know, either, either way works okay. It just seems you're repeating over and over, but that's okay. On accessory structures though, on three, you did have a do not extend more than 15 feet above grade.
Right.
And that, that doesn't, isn't in there now. Is that, are we going to 20 feet above grade or?
No, because if you look at the R1 district regulations, accessory structures have a height limit of 15 feet. So it's already in the code.
So it would, yeah, so you would need discretionary, discretionary permit to have a higher height than 15.
You'd need a variance to exceed the height limit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I hate to overlie this, I really do, Kristen, I'm sorry, but you, you, you may want to, if you're going to use, you, you may want to be repetitive in the same, with the same language in, in sections two and three, when you're talking about the applicable zoning standards. You say conform to standards of applicable zoning district, and then you say applicable zoning standards. You may just want to make them all the same. Okay.
Zoning district standards.
Right. Okay. And then I was going to jump ahead to review by zoning administrator, unless anyone had anything else. Okay. I had a couple of suggestions here, which is in 1868025, section one, rather than say second story additions, it just is maybe simpler just to say any additions, comma, not to exceed 300 square feet in the floor area, comma, to an existing second floor of a two-story single family.
Yeah.
Just thought that read a little better.
Anybody have any?
No, I agree with her.
Okay, could you send me that too?
Oh, yes. Okay. Yeah, okay. And then the next one was six. Exterior remodeling, oh yeah, here we go, yes. Instead of what the current sentence is, I thought it might be better, or just clearer to say minor modifications and remodeling of existing commercial office or industrial buildings, comma, including, but not limited to exterior remodeling of an individual commercial storefront, comma, when no addition is proposed. So just same, that same concept, I just reworded it.
Kristen, can you move to the page we're discussing?
And I was getting at, because I was like, okay, what's the difference between commercial? And then you have another section on commercial storefront. It's sort of the same thing. It's like, commercial storefronts are sort of a subsection of commercial building.
So it says exterior remodeling of an individual commercial storefront or minor modification and remodeling of an existing commercial office or industrial building where no additions proposed.
Right, and I'm suggesting that, to keep it simple, just say minor modifications, you start with minor modification and remodeling of existing commercial office or industrial buildings, including, but not limited to, and you could just say commercial storefronts or exterior remodeling of an individual commercial storefront, then comma, where no addition is proposed.
I guess the question is, do we even need to call out a storefront when the, when the trigger is that it's an exterior remodeling of existing commercial office or industrial, but no addition is proposed?
What if it's a storefront with, where the upstairs is residential? Is that still a commercial building?
Yeah, as well downtown here.
I, I think Kristen had a strong, I think you wanted a specific reference to commercial storefront, right?
Seems to have thrown us in the past without one. It was sort of, how do you handle it? It's not identified clearly in any of these provisions, so I added it in.
But I think, I think you're just, I think you're, you're, you're reflecting the emphasis on a storefront having sort of a greater significance. But if ultimately, you're reviewing commercial, exterior commercial changes, and it could be, we could add a mixed-use structure as well.
Hear what you're saying, Neil, I don't think you are, if you just say including, you know, including. Hear what you're saying, Neil. I don't think you are. If you just say, including, you know, including, but not limited to. Because you're just, he was basically giving an example. It's sort of a subsection. It's an example of what a commercial office is. I think right now. It can be perceived that way. It's like, oh, what's so special about a commercial storefront? Different set of rules. But if you reword it, then you're just basically saying, you're working, you're talking about commercial office industrial. Including storefronts.
And mixed use buildings, maybe?
Yeah. I mean, technically, commercial and office, would you not say retail, office, industrial?
Well, we're just, we're lacking, there's residential and.
Commercial is more bigger than retail.
So this doesn't apply to retail? They must do.
We know the subset of commercial.
Right.
Okay, fine.
And, and the other thing is, is that the downtown in particular, that one of those storefronts are historic, so. You get into that issue as well.
Well, the zoning, the Z A was, can also do minor changes to historic structures as well. Which is down in number nine. So depending on how minor the work is, and that's a call. Basically working with the consultant on those, those things. But often there's little details. I mean, as, as a zoning administrator. Kristin has worked with the historic consultant on changes to doors and windows that are usually considered upgrades. Pretty minor in scope, but on historic buildings to actually, you know. Maintain the historic integrity. Or putting up awnings, small permit work.
So do we want to modify number six? Because I'm fine with rearranging it if that reads better.
Yeah, I, I might just suggest striking the word commercial in front of storefront. It's kind of redundant.
Yep.
And that might make it just actually a little bit clearer.
Well, I, I do think that the overall operate, the, the overall trigger is that it's a, that it is a minor modification and remodeling of existing commercial.
Minor modification to the front.
Right.
I mean, if you really want to make it short.
That's still design review.
So isn't that really anything that's not residential?
Pardon me?
It's really a minor modification to anything that's not a solely residential building.
Right. How about this? Minor modifications of an individual storefront, commercial office or industrial buildings where no addition is proposed.
That's fine.
I'm, I, I still think you're trying to make an special, special exception for storefronts, where storefronts would fall under commercial, but.
Yeah, I, I think you could have, you could have a side of a building, you could have a rear of the building that we may want to have Z A review pages to. So, I mean, storefront seems like it's limiting. When what you're trying to do is allow for design review for any, because it's, keep in mind, it's not exempt. Not any change to exterior buildings is automatically exempt. So what is the, what is the review by the zoning administrator? It's going to be ostensibly for pretty minor exterior remodeling projects. Unless, the only exemption I can, the director could exempt if somebody was doing windows, changing out windows and putting some different windows on the rear or a side of a building that was so non.
Visible.
You know, non-visible. I mean, we can determine it to be so minor in nature that we even waive design review. But in the case of something where, well, it's visible, it is a change, but, and it may not just be a storefront. It could be something on an upper level or side, or something that's relatively visible. But pretty minor in scope. That's usually something we like to have the zoning administrator take a look at. Bring it through that process.
I mean, Kristin, I could make it very simple and just say minor, minor, sorry, minor modifications to non-residential buildings, including storefronts, when no addition is proposed.
Most of those buildings have residential, though. They have units above.
So how about this? Exterior remodeling of my, 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 sorry, minor modification remodeling of existing commercial office or industrial buildings or spaces where no addition is proposed. That way, that we're not limiting it simply to, you know, entire buildings that are erected purely for commercial office or industrial purposes.
I hear what you say. Yeah, Daniel, that's great. But I mean, from a legal perspective of the language I usually use is buildings or portion thereof. That's the language you put in.
Okay, great.
I love it. I love it. That's great.
I think we're, we're vehement agreement.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. You could just say minor modifications to existing. Well, I don't even need the word existing. Minor modifications to commercial office or industrial buildings or portion thereof, including including storefronts. Don't even think you need to say individual or remodeling or exterior. I mean, storefronts always at the front, right? And it's always exterior. Right?
Where no, yeah, where no additions proposed.
Do you want me to email that to you too?
Sure, I think I have it, but go ahead. That wouldn't be a bad idea.
Okay.
While you're on that page, I just noticed something in number two, slightly above that. Typo, see number two, where it says, attached additions to existing single family or duplex residences or accessory structures which require, not requires.
Yeah. Was everybody comfortable with that, that paragraph?
Which one, Natasha?
One you're just referring to. I mean, the. Look at that too closely.
What this, yeah, what this is just, I guess clarifying is that the zoning administrator does the design review for the.
Expansion of existing.
For the same floor areas ratio exceptions that she's empowered to review under the F A R exception requirements. Is that right, Kristin?
Well, I think it's supposed to infer that I can approve new accessory structures as well that need an F A R exception. So is that what's bothering you, Natasha? Is that the way it's written? It's awkward?
Honestly speaking, I didn't, I, I didn't spend much time on this one. I was kind of running out of time. So I'm leaning on the rest of the commissioners to provide input. I can't, I'm looking at it now. I was just writing.
It indicates I can prove additions that require an F A R exception on duplex and single family homes, as well as a new accessory structure or an addition to an accessory structure that requires a floor area ratio permit. Maybe we need to say our new accessory structures. I don't know.
So is it, are you, are the attached additions? Let me ask you this. How come you didn't say attached additions or accessory structures to existing family or duplex residences?
Well, accessory is attached. So either it should just say attached additions to existing single family residences or accessory structures which require a floor area ratio, because an accessory structure by definition is detached.
Yeah, so or detached accessory structure.
It's just redundant, because it, it has to be detached to be an accessory structure.
Yeah, but so any accessory structure, whether it's to a single family, duplex, commercial, anything. Any accessory structure. And then, and then the floor area ratio, the floor area ratio exception permit. Is that, is that part of the accessory structure piece? Or is that part of all of it?
That's referring back to the code section that empowers me to hear F A R exceptions.
Okay.
The, I think this, this section is a little, it's.
A little awkward, maybe.
Yeah.
Redundant to that floor area section in the fact that it's providing guidance to anyone reading this design review section that their path of travel, if they are getting, if they are getting a floor area exception, they're not exempt from design review. And the floor exception will be through the zoning administrator. Their design review process will also be through the zoning administrator. Because that, that floor area exception could come in various shapes and sizes. It could be just one hundred square feet on a second story. So it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily fit all the same parameters outlined in the rest of this section.
I don't know. Maybe I just look at them as being two separate. I hate to want to rewrite too much of this, but I guess I look at those as two separate things. So you would say maybe even like subsection A, any attached additions to existing single family duplex residences which require a floor area ratio exception permit. And two, any additional structure, any, any accessory structures which require floor area ratio. It's like two separate things, right? That both need the exception permit.
They're all just single family or duplex additions in the end. So I guess that's how you look at it.
Okay, so then I would, I think it might read then it say, attached additions to or accessory structures. Well, no, I haven't thought about this one. Sorry. I don't have any input on this.
Well, you can, you can call it a detached accessory structure, just to be clear about the difference between attached and detached. It's doesn't hurt. We're just trying to lump that in both these types of floor area exceptions.
Right, so attached additions or detached accessory structures to existing single family or duplex residences which require floor area, which require an exception permit.
Or detached to existing single family and duplex. So we're just moving the accessory structure in front of to existing, right?
I think it reads, it just flows better.
Okay.
But again, I, please, I don't want to be the only one doing all the talking here. You guys have other.
It's your punishment for being an attorney. I mean, the, I mean, the other thing you could do is just, is just start the, start the sentence off with the accessory structures. Accessory structures or attached additions to existing single family or duplex residence, residences which require a floor area ratio. Yeah, you could do that, and that way you get rid of the problem altogether.
Yeah.
Of detached or detached.
And then, so just to go, sorry, to go back to the other one, I just, here's why I ended up on the number six is minor modifications to commercial office or industrial buildings or any portion thereof, including but not limited to storefronts in the event no addition is proposed. Silence.
The event that no addition is proposed, or can we just say where no addition is proposed?
And as a lawyer, I would always say in the events, but you could take that out if you want. I mean.
Reads better where no addition is proposed.
Yeah.
And non-lawyer times.
All right, I'm going to keep moving because there's a few more things here. All right, in section ten, the next page. Any project not specifically exempted is what I would change it to. Any project not specifically exempted under section blah, 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 or listed under section blah.
Kristin, can you move the?
All right, number ten.
Yeah.
Number ten, so same sections, but the last one. Any project not specifically exempted under section eighteen sixty eight or listed under section da, da, da. As determined by the planning director. Wait, as determined by the planning director shall be heard by the zoning administrator. So delete the word determines. I think that just reads a little better. And then I had a question on eighteen sixty four thirty one, number one, new single family detached dwellings or duplexes or the reconstruction of existing structures.
Well, you know, can we go back to ten? I think this change, it changes what we're trying to say here.
Oh, okay.
Which is the planning director can determine if a project is subject to Z A. If it's not specifically listed in these other sections.
Yes, as determined by the planning director.
Shall be heard by the zoning. I'm just finding that really hard to follow.
So any project not specifically exempted under these sections, as determined by the planning director, shall be heard by the zoning administrator.
Is it is subject to the planning director, not that it's not listed.
Well, I mean, you don't actually need to say that it's shall be heard by the zoning administrator, because this is the that's actually what defines this whole section. Although it helps, it helps to clarify, because it's, it's a determination being made.
To the planning director determination after, this shall be heard by the zoning administrator as determined by the planning director.
I'm fine with that as well. But Neil's right, we don't actually have to say it has to be heard by Z A, because it's under that section.
You don't have to say it. It doesn't change the effect of the.
Has to be heard, not whether or not it's listed. I just want that language to be clear about that.
So it's, I guess I understand it's, it's under section eighteen sixty eight oh two, as determined by the planning director.
Yes, you've said here for which the planning director determines.
Any project.
The word for might be redundant, any.
Yeah, it's, it's, the wording's a little awkward.
Yeah.
Yeah. Projects not specifically exempted under those sections.
We're, we're actually trying to distinguish that there may be projects not listed here. And then projects not listed. There are going to be, there, we've discovered, no matter how well we tailor this, there may be gaps. Because, so we need the planning director, I'm either going to determine that this is subject to Z A review or subject to planning commission.
Right, yeah, so.
That's the option.
So what is being heard is the project, correct?
What?
What is being heard, you say, is that any, any project for which the planning director determines shall be heard? What is being heard is the project, right?
Yes.
So it might read then any project not specifically exempted under those discussions. So it might read then any project not specifically exempted under those sections, which the planning director has determined shall be heard by the zoning administrator.
Okay, so drop the four.
Drop the four and then has determined.
Okay.
Natasha, Natasha, that kind of makes sense to me. Does that work for you?
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay.
I think what was there right now just was a little awkward. So that's that's great.
Okay. Because I agree, it was a little awkward the way it was written.
Yep. And I had a question, but I can't see what my question was on section one. New single family detached dwellings or duplexes or the reconstruction of existing structures which are two-story or exceed 20 feet in height when measured. Okay, so I think you're saying here that any 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 building that ends up being two-story or more than 20 feet.
Yeah.
Okay. Or the reconstruction.
So I actually did have a question about that that one, Kristen. Because when you're when you're referring to reconstruction of existing structures, that means structures which will have been demolished.
Right, that was the language that's there. I didn't change it.
Oh, okay. Well, nonetheless, you can though, right?
Yeah.
You can.
Because I just even I don't I don't even know if that phrase is necessary. So just new single family detached dwellings or duplexes, which are two-story or exceed 20 feet. Because if it's if the structure's been demolished anyway, it would be a new it would be a new dwelling.
I'm not sure why she put that in. That was one of the past planning directors' changes.
Just get rid of it.
I mean, it may have been just to provide clarity to people who we
might actually
sort of get the concept of, well, I'm just rebuilding what was there. I might be something smaller.
Or reconstruction to me means you keep like the foundation, you build the wall and you build.
It'd still be a new dwelling, I mean.
Well, we have technically, we treat substantial demolition and remodeling as new construction, but again, it's I guess that's the that's probably the reason it's in there is to kind of hint to that, you know, essentially our reconstruction is is new. So I guess I don't know if maybe it sounds redundant. I guess is it is it misleading or is it a problem or?
It wrong? Can I ask a question, Kristen? Is it wrong to say any new or reconstructed residential dwelling?
Well.
Does that capture everything?
I think so.
Is that broad enough? So any new or reconstructed dwelling, or even to say reconstruction residential, I guess, you could just say any new or reconstructed dwelling, which is two-story or exceed 20 feet.
For some reason, this is always broken off multi-family. So if you don't specify it's not multi-family, then five and it could conflict. Or there's no reason for both.
All right.
Yeah, we take a we take a more higher review approach to any three units or more.
Okay.
Right, and I was gonna say it's only duplexes.
I see. Okay, so it's not supposed to capture everything. All right.
So basically, any multi-family structure is subject to design review. By which is down below on number five.
From my perspective, I can see what you're getting at here. I mean, it's I can't help myself as a lawyer to want to reword it, but I will hold back and move on.
The one thing to keep in mind is most most of our new structures are actually like demolition and new construction.
Large.
So the and occasionally we
There is an interesting perspective.
Replicating.
The owners often call a remodel, a new building, a remodel. They saved a wall, so.
Yeah. I mean, Brock, do you do you see this as helpful or confusing?
No, I think it it feels like it could be worded a little more cleanly, but it actually gets the point across. I mean, I understand what you're saying. But but I don't have any particular suggestions on how to to clean it up. But I I think that's what that's what happens and so many new buildings, so many remodels now basically are are down to the foundations. Because wood structures don't live forever.
Starting to understand why our corporate legal bills are so high.
So is this is or okay there as opposed to and new single family dwellings or duplexes or the reconstruction?
I think they intend it to be or because if you put and it's going to be one and it's got to you got to have both.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Or if right.
I mean, from my perspective, I guess it works again, it could be cleaned up, it could be reworded. I don't know how much.
Because what we're really trying to capture is only in the cases of new single family dwellings or duplexes. Or the reconstruction, Kristen, forgive me if I'm forgive me if I'm correcting here, the reconstruction of.
It's already written that way. We're just we only added the underlying part so we can rewrite it any way they want.
Right. But in terms of reconstruction, we're really talking about we're still talking about new single family and duplexes. Right?
Yep.
That particular one, yes.
So you want to just say any new or reconstructed single family detached dwellings or duplexes?
Sure.
Sure. How's that sound?
Any.
Yeah.
Any new single family?
No, any new or reconstructed.
Okay.
Got it.
Which are two-story, yeah, which are two-story or exceed 20 feet in height when measured in conformance with. Okay. Shall I carry on?
Yes.
I was okay with number two, second story additions of 301 square feet, although we talked about that missing one foot or more. Because the the size stops at 300 and restarts again at 301. And then section four, I think there's an additional S under requires additions to existing single family and duplex residences or accessory structures which also require. Oh, and this is the accessory structure. Whatever we did in maybe two earlier, I forget where we ended up on that. We might want to make that same change here.
Where what are we talking about?
In section four.
Okay.
Accessory structures or additions to.
Okay.
Existing.
Yeah, call it accessory structures first.
Yeah. Okay. So accessory structures or any additions to existing single family and duplex residences. So my preference would be to use the same language as you've used in one. So you say single family detached dwellings. So you would just say single here you've put single family and duplex residences. So you could just say duplexes. Because a duplex residence is the same as a duplex, right?
I'm I'm lost. I don't understand what we're trying to do.
Oh, I was just trying to conform the language.
Just say duplexes.
Okay.
So it matches the same as the paragraph, two paragraphs, three before.
Earlier, yeah. Then in section six, I would add a period, a full stop at the end of the end of that section, end of that sentence. In eight, I would say any addition to exterior alteration of existing business and professional AL offices, plural.
There's a lot of typos. Sorry about that.
And that was it, I think. Done. Thank you for bearing with me.
Probably what should happen is Natasha, can you send like a redline version to Kristen? Looking for comments.
Huh?
My whole copy here. I need I asked her to send me the specific sections I couldn't write down because they were longer.
Right, I can do that. If you need me to prepare a redline, I could, but I won't be able to do it in for a little bit.
Right. Well, I think we're going to just make these edits and return to the next meeting.
Right, okay. Yeah, I'm happy to review the redline.
We'll put them in red or something so we can kind of see how they stand out.
Yes, you're saying.
You want me to you want me to redline the already striked out and underlined copy to double up the amendments? Can I just change this and give them the amended version?
What I'm wondering is if we could approve the subject to the change we just talked about. And Natasha, just make sure that it is what we talked about. Could we do that?
If you guys are in favor of giving us that, I mean, it's going to go back to it's going to go back through city council and.
Right. You sending it back to this to the attorney? Is he going to look at it again?
He will.
Kristen.
Yeah. He will get the whole staff report and be present at the hearing.
Well, then would it make sense then to simply continue the continue the item even if it's on a consent calendar? For next time, that way you could read it. We could read all of the changes.
On a consent calendar.
Does that make sense?
I think we should continue it.
Yeah, I think we might want to continue it so that way. I mean, that way we're we're serving, you know, Kristen's needs by rereading this.
I mean, I think that'd be fine. And that does give us, we can't get it to the commission to the council until the first meeting in October anyway. So there's no, there's actually no delay really in the process. And that way we can have you guys. It may be cleaner to be able to report that you reviewed it. We made some changes and this is what's recommended.
Okay, I was just trying to be, I thought there was more.
The only other comment I had to this within recital one of the of the actual right at the beginning of the ordinance, I just felt was superfluous and we didn't need to talk about COVID-19 and I mean, I think the work they're doing is good work. And this is the fact that you're trying to make it clearer that can you see what the second, so it's the first whereas due to the economic impact of COVID-19, blah, blah, blah. And then the second one says during the public hearing, I think we could just start it there. I mean, the fact that we're trying to make the code clearer and we're trying to make improvements is sufficient. I don't know if you have to go into fact that the city's losing staff and COVID-19 is a problem unless you want some kind of historical record that we were in the middle of a pandemic.
Well, I'll just, I don't know if any other commissioners, it's it's an interesting exercise to really try to streamline and tailor back. And if you're comfortable just kind of keeping it as a and we're providing a little framework on that, as you say, kind of historic perspective. In case there's questions as to why, why is the commit, why is the staff doing this? But I agree that it's not necessarily pertinent to the fact that we're changing the code for good reason to streamline procedures for applicants and staff and everyone, so.
Well, it's relevant to the timing.
But I think if if I think if you'd like to, that's kind of why we why we included it was to give a little framework to we're taking, we're making an effort to streamline and reduce some of the hearing procedures, but so that's up to rest of commission if you want.
I agree with I agree with Natasha that 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 I guess in at least in theory, it's it's it isn't necessary, it's superfluous, but I would be inclined to keep it nonetheless because it explains the timing, explains, you know, why you're taking this initiative at this particular moment.
I think that's I agree.
It's almost like a historical record of what was happening at this time.
I mean, there are there are a lot of there are a lot of cities are doing all sorts of adjustments to their codes and things and citing the COVID-19 emergency situation as, you know, being very pertinent. And obviously, there are the orders that have affected permitting and things like that, but so it's not unheard of to kind of cite some of these I don't know, conditions, these surrounding conditions that are leading to, like you say, the initiative.
Explains why now.
Yep. Thank you, Kristen, for putting this all together. That was a lot of work, I know.
Great, Kristen. It struck me as just as horrendously horrendously difficult. So so thanks, thanks.
Now, having read it word word, I know how much effort Kristen put into this, so we'll be appreciative.
Okay, is Kristen, is there any members of the public know any attendees and and lost that part?
I wasn't seeing any.
Okay.
So it sounds like we have a motion to continue. Is there a motion you could do?
Sure. I'd move to continue the proposed text amendments to label 20 dash 25 to chapters 18 dot 06, 18 dot 34, 18 dot 35, and 18 dot 64 of the Locksboro Municipal Code.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Do we want to specify the date we're continuing to?
What's the date of the next meeting?
22nd.
22nd.
Okay, so amending the motion to to indicate that it's continued to September 22nd.
And Brock, you second?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Aye.
No opposed?
Natasha, you're opposed?
No, no, I'm an aye.
Okay, so I think that was unanimous. Delayed aye, but it's I think a unanimous.
Sorry.
That's okay. Vote to continue this heading to the next meeting. Vote to continue this heading to the next meeting on the 22nd.
Okay.
So the next thing on the agenda is approval of the August 25th minutes.
I think I shut the agenda trying to get this one to come up.
Again, you have to stop Jerry's screen.
Oh, no, I mean, I closed it completely to get it to go away.
It's okay, there's not much left on the agenda.
Not much left.
Does anybody want to move to approve the meeting?
I'll, I'll move to approve the minutes of our last meeting, which was dated.
August 25th.
August 25th, 2020.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No, okay, so for the record, that was unanimous approval of the August 25th meeting minutes. Are there any planning commission reports?
I will, we're, I'm supposed to be in the mountains when the next meeting is, assuming I can eat through the smoke by then. So just so you know, if, if the smoke dissipates, we're off for a backpacking trip.
Okay, well, I think we'll have this, and maybe it's, I don't anticipate a heavy agenda at this point, so.
Unless anybody else is gone, you have a quorum, so, so you release.
Anyone, anyone else traveling in the immediate future?
I'll be gone the last week of September, but that doesn't affect.
I mean, I am, but it's not going to affect the meetings, so. It's just why I wouldn't be able to do a red line, so.
The road to where we're going is closed right now because of fire and smoke, so I'm not, not a lot of, maybe by then, in a week and a half, it'll be, it'll be done.
Where, where is that, Brock?
Where are you going?
It's up McGee Creek, which is sort of between Mammoth and Bishop.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's closed now, my wife was just down that region fairly recently.
It's really bad, I have friends in Bishop who.
Bishop had an AQI of 409 yesterday. It's like twice as bad as New Delhi.
Yeah. There's now fires in Medford, Oregon, too, really bad ones, so Southern Oregon is starting to burn as well.
All right, it's just something else.
Yeah, did anybody go out and see the pink sun this afternoon?
Oh, yeah.
It was pretty.
This morning, at dawn, it's remarkable today, actually.
Pink sun before, I don't remember quite being that pink, it was an interesting phenomenon with the smoke and the, and the fog layer.
Feel like we're in a Cormac McCarthy novel.
End of the world.
I know.
All right, well, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Any opposed to adjourn? I see none, okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Tristan.
All right, I've lost my top screen again. Here it is.